Policy interventions in the sector, most notably the planting for food and jobs. This has resulted in an increase in agricultural sector growth from 2.9% in 2016 to 6.8% by 2018. And this agricultural sector growth has been driven by crop production. The industrial sector performance has been underpinned by petrol carbon production initially, and increasing investment in manufacturing sector as we work to stabilize the macroeconomic environment and improve the ease of doing business. Then to fiscal and monetary costs. So on the growth side, we are seeing that growth has peaked at this increase. The growing confidence in the macroeconomy owes a lot to the prudent managers, management of our finances and monetary affairs over the last two years. Prudent management by the Ministry of Finance and prudent management by the Bank of Ghana have performed a complementary role in managing our monetary financial environment. The efficiency in expenditure management has come from prioritizing and reallocation of spending to areas most needed. We have to prioritize, if you look at this graph, you see that spending has come down as we re-prioritize in this context. And that has resulted in the fiscal deficit on a cash basis reducing from 6.8% of remised GDP in 2016 to an estimated 3.8% in 2018. This is intentional. To give you a sense of the prudence in fiscal management, for the first time in a decade, Ghana recorded primary balance sacrifices. Primary balance is a tax revenue exceeding all government expenditure excluding debt service payments. Right? So that is your primary balance. For the first time in a decade, the primary balance with a payed primary balance sacrifices for two years in a row. The primary balance was a surplus of 0.5% of GDP in 2017 and 1.4% in 2018 compared to a deficit of 1.1% of GDP in 2016. A positive primary balance is important because it means a slowing down of debt accumulation. To underpin fiscal discipline going forward so that we don't get into this election cycle, increases in fiscal expenditure that create these deep fiscal bores. To underpin this going forward, Ghana has for the first time in our history passed a law, a Fiscal Responsibility Act, that limits the fiscal deficit in any year to a maximum of 5% of GDP and requires by law a positive primary balance. In addition, a fiscal council has been established to provide oversight and advice on the implementation of fiscal policy. These are new measures and new institutions that we have set up for the first time in our history. On the public debt. The total public debt has increased from 122 billion in 2016 to 1273 billion, including the cost of the banking sector cleanup at the end of 2018. However, the strong fiscal adjustment and better debt management has meant that the rate of debt accumulation is at 12% through the banking sector cleanup. The rate of debt accumulation is at its lowest in the last decade. And you will see the graph, I think, on the rate of debt accumulation. Although in absolute terms, interest payments have increased over the last two years with much better debt management. Interest payments as a percentage of GDP have gone down from 6.9% in 2016 to 5.6% of GDP in 2018. And therefore, the debt base of interest payments has declined. So yes, the additional borrowing has not added significantly to the debt service obligations as a percentage of GDP, and this is good debt management. Total public debt as a percentage of GDP slowed down to 54% in 2018. And in fact, this 2017-2018 period is the first time our debt has come down as a percentage of GDP since 2008. So it is significant. The total debt as a percentage of GDP slowed down to 54.8% and this created the room for the government to accommodate the painful but very necessary banking sector reforms, which cost government close to 3.2% of GDP. A combination of prudent monetary policy and fiscal consolidation over the last 24 months, supported by zero central bank financing of government, and strong external sector development have underpinned a steady disinflation process over the last 24 months. Inflation has dropped steadily from the high of 15.4% at the end of 2016 to 9% at the end of January 2019. This is the lowest we have seen in the last six years. The steady disinflation process provides a scope for the significant monetary policy easing. The Bank of Ghana's monetary policy rate has been cut by a cumulative 950 basis points, or 9.5% to UAA between 2017 and 2019. 9.5% reduction in the Bank of Ghana monetary policy. This has translated into also a reduction in short-term rates. Lending rates have fallen from an average of 32% to 27% in 2018. So we've seen inflation decline and had an impact on interest rates. Further to now the banking sector. Further to the strengthening of the monetary and financial environment, the Bank of Ghana has recently undertaken reforms in the banking sector aimed at strengthening the sector to support the growth agenda of Ghana. The consolidation of banks from 2034 to 2030 to the liquidation of Sunline at the end of 2018 have resulted in a banking sector that is well-capitalized, liquid, well-positioned to improve the flow of funds in the economy and to drive private sector player growth and development. This however has not been possible. Government had to spend a total of some 12 billion Ghana dollars for the banking sector cleanup in order to restore confidence and promote financial stability. We had a very precarious situation. Most people don't realize how close we were to the break. But government had to step in and save the financial system and save the deposits of 1.5 million depositors. 1.5 million depositors. Cleanup has also resulted in a fresh capital injection in excess of 4 billion into the banking industry. How has this worked out? According to the Bank of Ghana, just their recent monetary policy release, I quote, "Private sector credit growth has gained some momentum stemming from the improved liquidity position of the banks on the back of the rate of utilization increase." Annual private sector credit growth was 21.1% as of February 2019, compared with 2.4% in the same period in 2018. In real terms, private sector credit growth expanded by 10.9%. So we are restoring credit growth in the banking sector and this cleanup of the banking sector is going to yield positive results. Going forward, government and all financial regulators are committed to promoting a strong resilient financial system. The establishment of the Financial Stability Council, it brings all the regulators together is to ensure effective coordination among the financial regulators and to strengthen financial stability. Again, like with the Fiscal Council, the Financial Stability Council is an innovation of Nauru and Parity in Ghana, and we are only the second country in Africa to have a financial stability council and also a fiscal council. Let's look at our external performance. Ghana's external payments position has strengthened. For the first time in over two decades, two decades, that is 20 years, the trade balance, that is the difference between the export and what we import, recorded a surplus in 2017 and an even larger surplus in 2018. It is not because we are importing less, but likely because of increased exports of oil and exports of other traditional commodities, cocoa and wood. The positive trade balance has resulted in a significant narrowing of the current account deficit as a percentage of GDP. Improvements in the current account performance and increased capital inflows have helped to boost the international reserves over the last 24 months. Gross international reserves reached 7.36 billion dollars at the end of December 2017. Despite this improvement, the net foreign exchange reserve declined in 2018, first as forex sales by the Bank of Ghana, first is the forex sales by the Bank of Ghana in its normal exchange rate management, and second is the portfolio of outflows as foreign investors repatriated full points as their investments here and principal investments over concern about Ghana's exit from the IMF program. There were jitters in the market because Ghana was leaving the IMF program. Following the recent euro bond issue, Ghana's gross international reserves as the end of March 2019 stands at 9.9 billion dollars, equivalent to five months of import cover. I now take my attention to the exchange rate. The exchange rate is simply the price of one currency relative to other currencies. For example, the CD relative to the dollar. At the basic level, it is influenced by relative demand and supply for the foreign currency. Factors such as the inflation rate, balance of trade, fiscal balance, money supply, these are what we refer to as the fundamentals. These factors influence the exchange rate, but speculation and expectations about these fundamentals. External shocks such as oil price increases can also have powerful short-term effects on the exchange rate. When we see pressures on the exchange rate, first we need to determine where these pressures are coming from and whether the pressures are transitory or permanent. And as every astute central banker knows, even with strong economic fundamentals, speculation, expectations, and investor sentiments can exert pressures on the exchange rate. Ladies and gentlemen, you won't recall that I stated in 2014 that if the fundamentals are weak, the exchange rate will expose. That was prudent. That was prudent and it is true now. It is 100% correct. So if the fundamentals are weak, the exchange rate will expose. But it is what logic? To jump from that to a conclusion that if there is depreciation in your currency, then the fundamentals must be weak. Do you understand what I mean? It is very hard though. If the fundamentals are weak, the exchange rate will expose. But if the exchange rate moves, you cannot jump to that conclusion that the fundamentals are weak. That defines what? That defines what? There could be other external factors causing the exchange rate depreciation. For example, if I tell you that if your leg is broken, you are going to be unable to walk. And somewhere, somebody comes to tell me, this person is unable to walk. Can I just conclude that the leg must be broken? There may be other reasons why you are unable to walk. But the NBC logic will insist in the face of contrary evidence that since you cannot walk, then it must mean your leg must be broken. In 2014, the exchange rate depreciated by 31.3%. The fiscal deficit was 10.1% of GDP. The public debt rose to 70.2% of GDP. The inflation rose to 17% and GDP growth had declined from 7.3% to 4%. In other words, the economic fundamentals had weakened significantly and therefore the depreciation was easily explained. It was not caused by dwarfs or high rising rates, as we were told. The exchange rate in 2014 had exposed the weak economic fundamentals. And if you look at the table on the screen, it gives you the fundamentals as we have it in 2014 and you look at them in 2018. Every single one of them, real GDP growth, inflation, fiscal balance, wage bill, wage bill to GDP, gross debt, interest rates, and all of that, current account, all the fundamentals, you will see who are in a much weaker position in 2014 compared to 2018. So ladies and gentlemen, how has the city performed recently? At the end of December 2017, 2017, the city had cumulatively depreciated by 4.9% compared to 9.6% in 2016. And this was the city's best performance since 2011. At the end of 2017, we had the best performance of the city since 2011. The city had depreciated by 8.4% in 2018, likely on account of the emerging market pressures and US interest rate increases. The data, ladies and gentlemen, on the annual rate of depreciation of the city in recent years, and you will see this graph here. It's like 1980. The data on the annual rate of depreciation of the city in recent years shows that the worst performance so far under the MPP government, the 8.4% depreciation that we saw in 2019. That worst performance is better than the best performance under the previous government in 2018. So our worst is better than your worst. And then you say both. This one is not like good for Chalote. Ladies and gentlemen, the start of 2019, the start of 2019 has been characterized by another severe sharp depreciation of the city, which has likely been reversed. Within a week, the city went up close to 5.9% to the dollar. And then it retreated back to about 5.07% and even was threatening to go below 5. But this is really an unprecedented development. You don't normally see such a retreat where the exchange rate depreciates. And this was also, and you see within, in the next graph, now we look at the city dollar like a human, that you will see that in this period where there was a reversal in the city depreciation, the Bank of Ghana had not intervened in the market. In fact, if you look at it as a, at the end of March 2019, the city has depreciated by about 5.18% so far this year. The most, but we have to understand, how come we saw this sort of movement in the exchange rate at the end, at the beginning of the year? What happened? Why did it jump so far? Many, many reasons have been given, but let me tell you what happened. The most important and approximate cause of the recent depreciation is the tight inconsistency of an IMF prior action on the reserve target. At the end of January, as part of the seven prior actions, to get to the IMF goal and the completion of the IMF program, the IMF gave the seven actions to complete before March 15th. Seven prior actions that we had to meet, seven conditions. One of the conditions that the Bank of Ghana had to meet was to increase its net international reserves to the level of December 2018. To increase the net international reserves however meant that the Bank of Ghana could not sell any foreign exchange in the market. They had to essentially hold their hands to the back and could not intervene on the market during this particular period. So demand for foreign currency was not met by supply as normally happens on a day-to-day basis. And we know when the demand is greater than the supply, the supply is not coming, the price will go up. And this is exactly what was happening. So to meet the Bank of Ghana, the Bank of Ghana had to increase its reserves by about 800 million dollars. And this explains here what was happening. So once the reserve target was met, we then had the IMF Board meeting on March 15th, which was with Ghana. So this pathway explains why the city came under such pressure. It was a primary reason. Contrary to some speculation, the Bank of Ghana did not spend any reserves to revive the city following the initial depreciation. Some people have misunderstood the requirement by the IMF for the Bank of Ghana to build up its reserves by some 800 million dollars to mean that the bank used 800 million dollars to reverse the city depreciation. That would not be wise. The reason for the sudden reversal in the sharp depreciation that we observed was that the market corrected itself. Investor sentiments, expectations, and uncertainties acknowledged that the fundamentals are much stronger than suspected. And even without the IMF, fiscal and monetary discipline are assured. The reversal of the depreciation that has taken place actually supports the fact that the fundamentals are indeed strong. We should recall in this event that the weak fundamentals in 2014 meant that the NBC government of the day had to end up seeking an IMF aid. The difference today is stark and clear. Because of our fundamentals, because our fundamentals are strong, Ghana only yesterday formally exited from the IMF program. Indeed, the strength of Ghana's fundamentals was confirmed from March 6, 2019, March 16, 2019 by Standard and Poor's Global, which affirmed Ghana's sovereign rating as B with a stable outlook after upgrading Ghana's sovereign rating from B minus to B with a stable outlook last year. This in fact was the first upgrade by Standard and Poor's for Ghana in 10 years. First upgrade in 10 years. Second, Ghana also successfully issued a 3 billion dollar euro at more favorable rates than previous issues. The amount offered by investors was over 20 billion dollars. And this is a record in Africa. And it's a strong affirmation of the positive assessment of the fundamentals by the international financial markets. In fact, today Ghana has Africa's longest bond. We have a 31-year bond on the euro bond market. There's no other country, the process is remarkable, it's 30 years. So it's a bull of confidence. However, we don't live by macroeconomic stability alone. Disturbished it, ladies and gentlemen. Macroeconomic stability is important. It is like fresh air. You can easily take it for granted until someone vouchs air. However, macroeconomic stability alone is not sufficient. It must translate into the well-being of Ghanaans in their everyday life. Safe drinking water, good roads, access to good healthcare, stable and affordable electricity, good education amongst others. Here are some of the policies that the government of Nanao Dan Kwakufoado is implementing that go to the core of the aspiration of Ghanaans. The inclusive transformation agenda that we are pursuing. We are pursuing an inclusive transformation. We want to transform the economy, but we want to make sure everybody is included in that transformation. So the inclusive transformation agenda is to empower Ghanaans regardless of the circumstances and to reduce hardships. We are doing so on three fronts. First, building human development capacity and expanding top creation opportunities. Second, we are enhancing access to public services. And third, we are empowering local communities and investing in local infrastructure. Very agree on this front. As far as human development capacity is concerned and expanding top creation opportunities, we introduce the free SHS as a major transformation initiative to develop the human capacity of the future. We're seeing just last year a 26% increase in 2018 alone, meaning that an additional 181,000 students who otherwise have been denied secondary education are now having a chance to build the future. We're reserving 30%. We're reserving 30% of the places in the elite schools for people from deprived areas. And this is a little step in addressing inequality. The GEF Fund is going to spend 1.5 billion dollars and this financing has been arranged in the next three years for educational infrastructure, especially in school block lots and dormitories. We have doubled the capitation ground on a level from 4.5 cities to 10 Ghana cities. We've expanded the school feeding program to cover an additional 500,000 children with a staff as the nation builders call to provide employment to 100,000 refugees who are otherwise in the hole. And the recruitment in the public service has also gone up. If you look at recruitment and financial services for the security services, education, health, forestry, YEA in Nappu, over the last two years, this amounts to just over 350,000 jobs. And this is just of these sectors. Just for the sectors I've mentioned. I've not included banking for food and jobs. Because of the expansion of the economy, ladies and gentlemen, and better payroll management, the wages and salaries as a percentage of GDP, I'd like you to note that, but sometimes people think you're too expansive. But the wages and salaries as a percentage of GDP has declined from 7.2% to 5.8% in 2019. So the wages and salaries were at 7.2% of GDP in 2016 and we've brought it down to 5.8% whilst at the same time increasing jobs to people. This is good economic management. The private sector is also adding jobs. We've restored the teacher training allowance. We've restored the teacher training allowances, restored the nation training allowances, and we have abolished fees for postgraduate medical training in Ghana. In terms of enhancing access to the delivery of public services in another uh three weeks' time or less, uh three weeks' time, we will see medical delivery by drones begin in Ghana of critical medicine. Critical medicines imply. The start will be from Suwum and then we'll spread it out from to the rest of the country. We have increased the share of the district assembly common fund to persons with disabilities from two percent to three percent. We have also ensured the implementation of our pledge of employing fifty percent of the persons who manage the country's store goods from amongst persons with disabilities. The lead empowerment has added one hundred and fifty thousand beneficiaries. On pensions, in November twenty seventeen, that meant transfer three point one billion Ghana C Ds of two pension funds from custodial accounts to the pension scheme of the Lever Union Fund, of the Lever Union. Funds that have been outstanding since twenty eighteen. We are also empowering local communities. The Creative Arts Council uh in twenty eighteen, uh we provided support to the Creative Arts Council uh and we're building, capacity building. We are also building the Eastern Region, we've also built the Eastern Regional Theater. The work has been completed and work is ongoing on the theater in Kumasi. We want to do a theater in every region. Under the National Entrepreneurship Innovation Program, thousand three hundred and fifty startups and small businesses have benefited from government business support. The beneficiaries receiving a rate of ten thousand Ghana C Ds to hundred thousand Ghana C Ds each at an interest rate of ten percent. We have increased access to electricity and reduced tariffs of seventeen point five percent for households and thirty percent for businesses. We've also established the Zongo Development Fund to finance infrastructure. Under the infrastructure for property, renovation and development, many projects are taking place across all two hundred and seventy-five constituencies, including warehouses, one gate, one dam, water systems, toilets, rural markets, clinics. Uh, and also, we have ordered the one, uh the two hundred and seventy-five ambulances under this program to one constituency, one ambulance group. So, so much is happening. On the management of the economy, many may not appreciate how much work has been done by this government. But if you ask the question, how do you take an economy which is in a deep fiscal hole with no meat on the bone, with a high deficit, a high debt burden, high interest rate, an economy which cannot pay basic obligations such as teacher and nursing training allowances, with a weak banking system that was on the verge of collapse? And at the same time, you reduce seventeen taxes, implement free S H S, restore teacher training allowances and nursing training allowances, introduce NAPU, introduce many other social interventions. And at the same time, you reduce the budget deficit and increase economic growth. How do you do? It takes competent economic management. Ladies and gentlemen, let's look at how we have been trying to leverage technology for formalization of the economy. In this area, so much is going on, some people don't even know. Ladies and gentlemen, that Ghanaian society is likely in full. In certain environment, access to services, targeting in the delivery of public services to those who need these services most. The deprive becomes visible, and in most cases, it depends on who you know. For the banking sector, lending rates are high, partly because of the high information problems in establishing identity and in verifying ownership of property. These have to change if we are aspiring to become a middle income country. It is for all these reasons that we are aggressively pursuing the agenda to formalize the economy through digitalization. For the public sector, leveraging on technology and digitization of systems improve administrative systems in the way we govern ourselves. In a well-functioning society, citizens don't need to know somebody or bribe somebody to get a passport, driver's license, access to water or electricity. We cannot build a fair and equitable society that runs on agents of bribes, guru boys and lankas. With digitization, we are introducing new and more efficient ways of doing things. We are changing the way things are done in the affected institutions for the benefits of all the regulars. Here are a few of the reforms we have undertaken and we are undertaking in the digitization space. We have the introduction of the national ID card is again changing despite its leading challenges. So far, about five hundred thousand cars have been issued, uh and we've had the pilots uh take place in Adenta and Madimbo. We expect the mass issues to commence at the end of April. On the digital property addressing, the process of tagging all four million homes to digital addresses is ongoing, supported by the Ministry of Special Initiatives and Administration for Local Government. We've digitized driver's licenses and vehicle registration. We've introduced mobile payments interoperability. This has been implemented as a major step to financial inclusion. And because of mobile payments interoperability, today, if you have a mobile phone and you have mobile money, you can pay money into a bank account and also receive money from a bank account. So, you don't really need to have a bank account, and this is why all the holders of mobile money account can have access to some banking services. And it's a major, major uh strike that we have made in this country. In fact, Ghana is the only country in Africa, the only country in Africa where you have that type of interoperability through mobile and the bank account, only country in Africa. The digitization of the land registry is going on. We are, we are really moving to digitize the land registry so that you don't get to the land registry if someone will tell you your document is missing. Uh, so, there is a major program uh that is, that is being started uh for us to digitize the land registry uh in Ghana, and it is proceeding well. Passport applications are now online, and the passport duration has been increased from five to ten years. Renewal of N H I S registration by mobile phone has been seen as phenomenal innovation with an upgrade of seventy thousand renewals every week, anytime. And all, before, our people had to go and line up outside offices and wait, sometimes for days in the rural areas to get N H I S renewal. But today, all you need to do is take your mobile phone, dial star nine two nine hash, get, use your mobile money to pay, and bingo, you have been renewed. To enhance access to telephone and digital services in rural areas, government has deployed two hundred rural telephone sites for broadband access seven five hundred communities in the last two years, two hundred in the last two years. In the previous government, they did only seventy-eight in eighteen years on the rural telephone site, seventy-eight in eighteen. Finally, the management of the state transport corporation has introduced online ticketing for state transport corporation buses, where you can book and pay for your ticket using your mobile phone. This is currently being transported, so we will no longer need to go to transport yard to line up, buy a ticket. You sit at home, pay for it, select your seat, and then you go. We have also launched an emergency one one two number for the police, fire and ambulance services. And work is ongoing to integrate this emergency one one two number with the national digital addresses so that the emergency services will immediately know where you call, exactly where you're calling from. So, this is a major thing. You can try the one one two. A lot of people don't even know that an emergency number works. That if you need police, ambulance or fire service, just dial one one two from wherever you are. We are working on the implementation, but once the implementation is complete, immediately the emergency services receive the call, they will know exactly where it's coming from because they will know the digital address of the property where you are. The digitization of the police information systems has also resulted in the deployment of one thousand cameras across the country with central monitoring center in Accra as well as digital call centers in Kumasi and Tana um to monitor all the sixteen regions. The next phase, which is being done by police and national security, will see eight thousand cameras deployed throughout the country to fight crime. We've also been working very hard at the ease of doing business. And here again, we are trying to help companies, businesses as part of the digitization agenda. For example, now, to register a business, we've changed the way it is done. To register a business, instead of filling four separate forms, to start a business, only one form is now required. The registrar general has merged all four forms that is starting a business, that is the tick application, the snit application, the business operating permit, and and also the business registration form. They've merged into one, and it's automated. So, everybody will get this, and you will get your business operating permit issued as well as um the certificate for registration as well. So, it's a major relief to people who go trying to go to different parts just to register a business. We've also automated the process of obtaining a construction permit. So, I know contractors are happening now uh with this. But even more remarkable is the implementation thanks to the work of Chief Justice of an electronic justice system that allows automated serving of court processes with speed and ease. Rightfully operational, court documents will be easy to find and track, and there will be no duplication of the same case to be had by different courtrooms and by different judges. This is a major innovation, and I've done my heart to Chief Justice. We've also looked at the process of obtaining electricity to your house. There were about seven different steps to reduce it to three. And by the end of the year, they are promising us that the process of obtaining electricity in your house will go completely freelance. So, we're trying to 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 hold them to that. We've, we've, we've introduced a paperless court system that has reduced the time to clear books and reports to less than forty-eight hours. And this is all very good. As I mentioned also, we've abolished seventeen nuisance statutes. So, you are seeing the ease of doing business, uh we're enhancing the ease of doing business with all of these reforms. Another area is the structure of the economy. We're changing the structure of the economy through value addition, and this is key to going beyond A. We know about the planning for food and jobs and has, what it has done. We've established the Ghana commodity exchange, which is an ultra-modern trading system linked to warehouses located across this country to connect markets. We know about the one district, one factory policy that we are implementing. A similar strategy to existing businesses. We've also started a integrated rock site and aluminum industry. This is an exciting industry, a new industry, one that Ghana has wanted to do since the days of Ompram that we've not had the opportunity to do. Thankfully, we are in the process of doing so now, and I believe that the data shows that the integrated rock site industry will be more valuable to Ghana than the oil industry. And we are doing all the linkages downstream. We, we are also looking at, I mean, so we are, we are on course with that. Um, we are also looking at the automotive industry, and you see many, many automotive policies come out, and many companies are going to be setting up in Ghana. What we have done for rock site, we are doing exactly the same for the iron and steel industry. A bill is currently in parliament, and we think it will be passed before the rise so that the iron and steel industry and the rock site industry will rise together in this country, which is the game. So, it is really key what we are doing. The energy sector is part of a key to industrialization. We inherited many challenges in the sector, but we are, but these challenges are being addressed. Ghana has excess capacity in energy generation, but the contracts entered into for many of these I T Ps are expensive and fundamentally and financially dangerous. Many of these contracts are take or pay arrangements. This means that even if we don't need the power, we still have to pay for it. Ghana is currently paying thirty-four million dollars a month in excess capacity charges alone for the power we have not used. This will increase to about forty-one million dollars a month later this year with the coming on stream of cent power, heavy power and energy power plant. Even though we don't have problems with power generation capacity, we have problems with transmission. The breakco network is old, and with it has been thus far unable to invest in high-capacity plants. The takeover by of E C G by P D S should help bring in market leader investors. The million challenge operation company uh is expected to result in some one billion dollars invested in the power sector over the next five years. Ladies and gentlemen, Ghana has enough gas to power all our plant plants without relying on imported gas. Gas is so much cheaper than like before. This is why a policy decision has been taken to switch largely to the use of gas in energy generation. However, most of our gas is in the west of Ghana, and most of our power plants are in the east. And so, we have to overcome the transportation bottleneck. But if we do this switch, uh which will be done this year, the estimates are that we will save about three hundred million dollars annually, just on that switch. The West African gas pipeline supplies gas from the east to the west, and this is why we're doing a reverse flow to move the gas from the west to the east. The first phase of the reverse flow will be completed this month, which will allow us to transport some sixty million scarves from the west to the east. And the final uh completion of this work should be done between July and August. That's the phase two of it, which, at which um in this process, we should not be, we should not import any gas anymore. Use all domestic gas. So, by July, August, uh we will be using domestic gas, all the, the, this, and which will really bring down uh cost of gas in this country. And of course, car power is also moving to the west to be the uptakeer for this, for this gas. You know, we are also, uh Ministry of Finance has also been directed. One of the major problems in this at the heart of the energy sector is short collections by E C G. They're not collecting enough of non-P D S. And this, when the E C G doesn't collect enough, they don't pay the others in the value chain, breakco and so on. Uh, and 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 this provides, and the other I T Ps. So, uh, and for example, government has been a major culprit in not paying bills. And so, government has directed that the Ministry of Finance should henceforth pay the bills, not through the M D S, but pay directly to the dealers, so that there will be no We are going to see more pay pay meters in operation. Ladies and gentlemen, I will move on to port reforms. Our ports remain important national assets, and we must manage it to improve trade to the benefit, fit of all Ghanaians. Government has devoted considerable energy over the last two years to different stakeholders, shippers, importers, exporters, freight forwarders, traders, petard dealers, listening to their concerns. What was baffling to us was that even though the M D P government had not increased import duties, there were persistent complaints that duties at the coast were high. So, government set up a post-review committee to review the complexity of Ghana's ports within the West African region. Here are some of the surprising findings. Here are some of the surprising findings, except for Nigeria. Except for Nigeria, the total marine charges and security fees charged at Tema for container handling far exceed those of our key competitors. In fact, there are three times the charges in Lomé and merely twice the charges in Abidjan. No port in West Africa is charging the equivalent of the Ghana maritime security fee of nearly $20,000 per vessel entering our ports. Import handling charges are higher in Tema than in any port in West Africa. While nearly 90% of containers that come to Tema are physically examined, physically, they open them and staff them, examine and restart. 90% are physically examined. Only about 5% are subject to physical examination in any modern port. Physical examination is a major source of corruption at the ports. Data happened because we wanted to find out, all this physical examination, how much does it add to revenue? When we asked that question, it was a semata. Because, how much? 90%? So how much did it add to revenue? The result was that it added 0.38%. 0.3, not even 0.5. So it's less than 0.4%. All there was added in protest to all this examination, 0.38% is on revenue. So the time, the artificial facilitation, the fees and the energy spent in collecting this amount, totally negates any gain this may have brought to the country. Many poor charges, many poor charges are a percentage of the value of the goods. And this makes them exhausted and hardly justified. Why should the cost of scanning a container, the medical examination fee, the network charge be a percentage of the value of the goods in the container? Why should the cost of processing and documentation covered in ports be a percentage of the cost of the value of the goods? In most modern ports, these fees are flat cash. It's the same, whether it's the boot, you take a picture, it's $1 or $2 or $10. So it is like a photographer wanting to take a picture of you. You are too deep. One is wearing a Rolex watch and he's trying to have you for a picture. The other one doesn't have a white bope. He doesn't. The benchmark values we found also apply by customs to various commodities in the completion of import duties in Tema are much higher than in Lomé, Abidjan and Abidjan. In many cases, they are 100 to 200% higher. If you take, for example, a Ford Focus 2011, you go to Tema, our benchmark would say it is worth $9,000. You go, there is no to Lomé, the same car will benchmark it at $3,000. And the same car in a car are also exactly as normal, exactly the same price of $3,000. So it's a problem. You then end up paying double the duty because the benchmarks are so high in Accra, this and the, Tema, this and Lomé and Abidjan. And we have a very acute crisis. Many, many importers are unable to pay their duties, their cars and commodities are not seen and auctioned off very cheaply. So, so. So ladies and gentlemen, for importers, the choice is clear. There is an increasing, the data shows that there is an increasing dilate of trade away from Tema Port and the smuggling of many items into Ghana is very tempting. Let me give you this data, let's think about this. Container volumes in Lomé Port between 2013 and 2018 have gone up by 300%. Lomé, container volumes between 2013 and 2018 has increased by 300%. That's 60% annually on average. Annually, Ghana between 2013 and 2016, container volumes have increased by 4.1%. So you are looking at 4.1% against 300%. So there's so much of this container volume. And when you go to the Lomé Port, you see a long lineup of trucks coming into Baguio. So you are seeing exactly what is happening. So because of this cabinet, after consulting, all of this has decided to implement some new reforms. Government is making these, these reforms, these decisions with the objective of increasing trade facilitation and efficiency and revenue. Port revenue depends on volume. Port revenue depends on volume. So if you don't have the trade facilitation, you will not have the volume. And when you don't have the volume, you will not have the revenue. And this is what they're thinking, they're thinking that is informing these decisions. So we are looking at increasing revenue. But to do so, we cannot be uncompetitive between Ghana and our next low neighbors. And the government is getting ourselves in the foot. So, to reduce the incidence of smuggling and enhance revenue, the benchmark delivery values of imports will be reduced by 50%. This, however, for very close, the reduction will be 10%. This is because there is already a certain amount of appreciation which in fact will take you closer to the 10%. This will be effective from tomorrow.